Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prethert?
Here.
Ms. Raghu?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
Here. We will now pledge the allegiance to the flag. Those of you who'd like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move now to public participation. And I would like to read a proclamation. Whereas Caroline Scott Harrison was born in Oxford, Ohio at two South Campus Avenue on October 1st, 1832. And whereas her father, John Witherspoon Scott, was a professor at Miami University, and her mother was Mary Neal Scott. And whereas Carolyn met Benjamin Harrison in Cincinnati while her father taught at Farmer's College. In 1852, Benjamin graduated from Miami University and Caroline graduated from the Oxford Female Institute. They married in Oxford on October 20th, 1853, in her parents' home at 131 West High Street. And whereas Benjamin won the U.S. presidential election in 1888, and Caroline and Benjamin left for Washington, D.C. in 1889, Benjamin Harrison became the 23rd president of the United States when he was inaugurated on March 4th of that year. And whereas Caroline was the first in the White House to have a decorated Christmas tree, and she was also responsible for having electricity installed in the White House. And whereas an advocate of education for women, Caroline agreed to raise funds for the Johns Hopkins Medical School in 1890 on the condition that women be admitted on the same basis as men. And whereas Caroline became the first president general of the newly formed Daughters of the American Revolution in 1890. And whereas Caroline Harrison's contributions as First Lady unfortunately are often overlooked, but she did much to further equality for women, and her plan for White House renovation contributed greatly to its future evolution. And whereas Caroline died in the White House on October 25th, 1892, and she was mourned by the nation, funerals were held both in Washington, D.C. and in Indianapolis, Indiana, where she's buried at Crown Hill Cemetery beside her husband, who died in 1901. And whereas a scripture of, a sculpture of Caroline Scott Harrison now sits in the backyard garden of the Oxford Community Arts Center, illuminating her importance to our community, now therefore I, William B. Snively, mayor of the city of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim October 25th, 2022 as Caroline Scott Harrison Day in the city of Oxford, and I urge all citizens to celebrate her importance here in Oxford and as First Lady. Do we have someone to receive this? Thought we did.
Good evening, everyone. Heidi Schiller, I'm the executive director for the Oxford Community Arts Center. I'll be very brief. I just came here to say thank you to Mayor Snively and to City Council and to city staff for taking one day out of the year each year to celebrate Carolyn Scott Harrison in the month where so many important moments of her life took place. You know, at the Oxford Community Arts Center, our mission, of course, is to promote the arts and to enrich and enliven our Oxford community, but it is also to preserve the legacy of the Oxford Community Arts Center. And it's so interesting to think of Carolyn Scott Harrison graduating from that little two-story building on the corner here, right across from this building, and then that building evolving from the Oxford Female Institute into a larger building of OX College, becoming part of Miami University, and finally the home for the Oxford Community Arts Center for the past 20 years. We absolutely love our connection to Carolyn Scott Harrison. We love our sculpture in our West Gardens. And we are particularly proud to have this proclamation be part of our Carolyn Scott Harrison display, which is on view now through November 11th at the Oxford Community Arts Center. Thank you all very much and have a great evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. At this time, we will invite anyone wishing to address council about items that are not on the agenda or if they are on the consent agenda. Please come forward at this time, state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you five minutes. Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do any items need to be removed? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move then to resolutions, and you can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a new agreement for legal services with Christopher R. Kennard, attorney at Coolidge Wall Company, LPA.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you want to?
Yes, thank you. Three years ago today, City Council adopted a resolution appointing Chris as our city attorney and also authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with them, with Coolidge Wall Company as our city attorney. The contract provides a retainer of $85,000 a year, and it provided an hourly rate for work outside the retainer of $135 per hour. So Chris has requested an increase, and we discussed that at the last council meeting executive session, from $135 per hour to $155 per hour. And so I'm recommending that council approve that increase. The retainer will remain the same. And the hourly rate in January, January 1st, 2024, it provides that it will be increased each year thereafter, the next year being January 1st, 2024, by a percentage amount equal to the annual cost of living increase granted to the non-union workforce pay scale. So once again, we're recommending, I'm recommending that council approve that resolution, and we'll sign a new agreement if so approved.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this item before council? Seeing none, any discussion on council? We've kind of had our chance to discuss it.
Well, and I guess what we would say is that we've done some comparables, and we feel like we're getting high-quality legal service at a price that's equal to or better than other communities our size. So we feel like research supports that this is good for the city of Oxford, and it seems like it's good for our law directly.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Would you like to read the second?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an addendum to the 2021 Real Estate Purchase Option Agreement with Episcopal Retirement Services Affordable Living LLC, authorizing a 30-day option extension without payment.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Hi, Sam.
Good evening, everyone. This is a request that Episcopal Retirement brought to us because of their timing for the purchase option agreement that we have is about to run out. As you may recall, they did not get the competitive funding award earlier this year. There is another possibility that just came out literally two weeks ago, and they would like a little bit more time to review that. It's very similar. It's a, it's a affordable housing income stream for 62 and above instead of 55 and above. So the buildings could be potentially very similar, but they want to get an idea on whether they're, they would be competitive before they would pay the option fee and go through the process of designing everything. So we feel like that's reasonable to give them the extra time.
Okay. Thank you, Sam.
Mm-hmm.
Would anyone from the public wish to address this resolution before council? Seeing none, council, do you have any questions or discussion?
Any reason why they only asked for a month? I mean, to go through the process of the resolution? It seems like we're not super time-bound or sensitive. Do they feel like that's all they need? I mean, we could come back and do this again in a month.
Yeah, I think they just want to get an idea on whether paying the $2,000 for the option fee for the full year would be worthwhile. We also want to respect your wishes too, as far as tying up the land for another year. Not completely, but that eight or 10 acres that they might use. We may want to do something else with it if they don't feel like they can get, they can score well for the, for the funding, for the tax credit, so.
Thanks, Sam. Anyone else? Questions? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, and we'll move to ordinances, first reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3654 supplemental budget ordinance number eight to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2022.
Okay, welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Just a couple items on this supplemental. The first one's to make an adjustment to the budget expenditures for operating system upgrades. During the budget process over a year ago, the, when we got the quote, they didn't include the labor to install all the Windows upgrades in all the machines and the servers. So between this and there was a little money left over in CIP that they needed an additional $2,820 from the general fund and then $940 from the water and wastewater funds to be able to get those. And they run out at the end of the year, so this has to be done by the end of the year. And then the next one is always a good one to bring to council. It's make an adjustment to budgeted revenue expenditures for the hotel short-term rental, rental term, short-term rental receipts. And this year, we, I mean, the way that the hotel industry in Oxford has recovered since the COVID crisis is pretty amazing. We're back up into the same dollar range we were back in 2019. So this one would increase revenue in the general fund by $62,056 and the hotel tax agency fund by $67,056. And then also on the expense side, increase the expenditures by 67,056, and that money goes to Enjoy Oxford per agreement. And the reason why it's $5,000 more in the hotel tax agency fund, it takes into consideration the short-term rental income that we plainly received by the end of the year.
Okay.
Should be about fine.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay. Would anyone from the public wish to address this ordinance? Not hearing anyone? Anyone from council have questions, discussion? Okay, this is first reading, and we'll be hearing it again at our next meeting. Thank you. Can you read our second first reading?
An ordinance approving a six-month extension of the approved final subdivision and construction drawings and amending a condition of the final plan development for South Farm Section 4.
Okay, thank you. Sam, welcome back.
Thank you. Hello again. Another housing project, this one is much more likely. This is a one that you've seen several times, so there's no drawings in the packet, but this is the 25 homes off of Kerr Road and Roberts Drive that have been extended once before. We, we have a request for an extension of six months and a removal of the one-year time limit for installing the improvements, since that would be covered by the financial security anyway. So we believe that's, that's acceptable. The John Bear, representative of the owners here tonight as well, and they did request a emergency ordinance on this so they could kind of get started even yet this fall and winter before things get too difficult to move dirt. However, in reviewing with city manager, we couldn't find a supported purpose in the charter because of the immediacy of the health and safety, kind of preserving the, the health and safety more directly. So, so we just have it in front of you as a typical first reading. So happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counsel, questions, concerns?
Glad to hear this is moving forward. Hopefully, the additional time would allow them to.
Yeah, I was beginning to think it was going to die off like some others have. So that's good news. Okay, again, we'll see this one at our next meeting. Now we have second readings. We have two. You can read the first.
An ordinance repealing and replacing section 50501 of the codified ordinances of the city of Oxford pertaining to dogs and other animals running at large.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. And?
So at the last council meeting, you gave first reading to a revision to our section that talks about dogs and other animals running at large. And of course, we had some discussion. It was basically a simple insertion, insertion, insertion. Having trouble with that word tonight for some reason. Of one sentence. And of course, the discussion we had, police chief also commented on it. So tonight, what we've done is that you have the original exhibit A with the simple sentence added, and then you have a revised exhibit A, which basically goes into a little more, goes into a little more detail. We basically struck out the section two, C2, which said keep the dog under reasonable control of some person. And then we added two new sections, plus we revised D. So basically, the change is that we're saying after number one, which talks about keeping the dog physically confined or restrained upon the premises of the owner. The next two is, it says, when off the premises of the owner, keeper, or harbor, keep the dog on a leash under reasonable control of some person who is of suitable age and discretion. You'll note that we don't define the length of the leash, so it would permit someone to have a retractable leash, but they have to have the animal under control, reasonable control. Then we added this section, which was included in part in the one that I had provided earlier, but it says this subject, this subsection does not apply when the dog is within a designated dog park or city-sponsored off-leash dog event, or if the dog is a police dog in the performance of its official duties. So those two sections are new and added. And then they did revise slightly D, which basically says any animal running at large as an area described in subsection A above is prima facie evidence that the animal is running at large. So just a slight revision there, but hopefully this will do the trick for us, and we're recommending that council then adopt, excuse me, make a motion to substitute revised exhibit A for the original exhibit A, which is the attachment to the resolution. So we would need, if you agree, a motion to substitute that and then give a final reading to the, to the ordinance, excuse me.
All right. I think we will go to the public first, if there's anyone who would like to address it, and then we can take up the substitution. Would anyone like to address this? Yeah, come on forward. Thank you.
So one question, I apologize.
You're naming.
Oh, yeah. My name is Steve Sullivan, 104 Marty Court. And I should have followed up on this a little more before, but at the first reading, cats were brought up. And so do I understand now that the, that final D includes all species?
It's a good question.
A says or animals. It has to list a number of animals, and then it says or animals. And so I imagine, doesn't explicitly say it, but if I had a hamster, let it run large, or a parrot, I think, except any animal that's under control. That's the way the ordinance has read.
But we're basically saying that you have to keep the dog on a leash. So yeah, you're not supposed to let other animals run at large in the city as well. You have chickens, they need to be on your property. If you have a cat, I guess it's assumed that you would keep it on your property, but we don't deal specifically with it there. And I don't know how realistic that is, to be quite.
Cats don't like leashes.
Yeah. But no, we're only talking about leashes for dogs.
Okay. So maybe I will, I will testify for just a minute on, on, in favor of having cats explicitly included within this list. And wherever it goes from there, we can look at that. But as a longtime cat owner, I recognize the myriad benefits that cats bring to our lives. In fact, I cried for days when my first cat, Cream Puff, died, and I continue to enjoy our current cat as it purrs on my chest every night. But at the same time, as a conservation biologist, I recognize the destruction that cats have caused in ecosystems as close as home, as close as my own home backyard, as well as around the world. And anytime that we discuss cats, even, even just a moment ago, right? We, there, we, a lot of other things come up that we often don't address with other animals, and oftentimes it can be sometimes an unusual amount of emotion, and personal anecdote can come into the discussion. So I want to avoid those things as I address the council using evidence and decades' worth of scientific literature. I first want to recognize that the organism that I'm talking about, the house cat, is not native to this continent at all, anywhere. And regardless of whether the cat was born outside, and people like to call it feral or wild or some other word for it, or if it's kept inside and it loves cuddles, this species is a predator whose biology requires high amounts of protein, whose physiology is adapted to kill a wide diversity of species in pursuit of that protein, and whose behavior can outwit almost every vertebrate native to this continent. Cats are a threat to all species that are smaller than they are. And in fact, if cats were larger, this ordinance that we are applying to dogs would also apply to cats probably without any question, because they would be perfectly happy to eat us too. But since we are larger than cats, we have the privilege of ignoring the threat that cats pose to almost every single one of our other non-human neighbors. Since the 1970s, American birds have declined by 30% overall. The forest birds of Ohio have declined by nearly 20%, and our grassland birds in this state have declined by over 50%. Certainly, cats are not responsible for the entirety of this decline, but they are a significant contributing factor, especially in our neighborhoods. When did any of us last see a bobolinker here, a metalark near Oxford? In fact, the sonic sounds of our neighborhoods are different for our children today than they were for everybody sitting up here. So indoor cats, cats that this ordinance would apply to explicitly, live longer, healthier lives. Outdoor cats simply kill more animals than any other non-native threat on, on the continent. Cats not only kill birds, but when's the last time you saw a red-headed skink or a five-lined skink basking on your sidewalk in the morning? Your grandparents did. Or a short-tailed shrew eating slugs in your garden. They're not there. You have more slugs in your garden because of cats. Of course, some cats seem perfectly happy not killing anything. On the other hand, cats can easily kill and maim without us knowing. Oftentimes, well-fed cats can be more dangerous to local wildlife than uncared-for cats because fed cats have the energy to pursue prey recreationally. Simply being chased can reduce the fecundity of local wildlife, and injuries caused by cats are ultimately often fatal anyway. And the occasional cat that does not pursue its prey is not representative of cats as a deadly population of organisms. Earlier I noted that our life, earlier I noted that our large size relative to cats seemingly allows us to ignore the danger that cats cause to other species. There is a caveat to this. Cats carry a range of parasites, most infamously toxoplasmosis, that can injure both wildlife and humans. Pregnant women are advised to avoid cat feces, both indoors and out, for fear of fetal harm. The same parasite can infect adults, causing symptoms such as increased aggression, decreased rule-following, and generalized mistrust. Cats love to be outside. There are many ways that we can allow cats to enjoy the outdoors without them becoming a threat to our neighborhoods. Enclosed patios or caddios that function much like a dog run are effective and enjoyed. Training our cats to walk on a leash can happen. I have a neighbor who, who does it as, as a matter of course before she adopts out cats. Even an open window with the screen installed can fulfill a cat's desires like mine. Cats can be perfectly happy as 100% indoor pets, and when always kept under our direct control, they will certainly live happier and healthier lives. Although cats are less dangerous to most humans than dogs are, they are more dangerous to most other animals than dogs are.
You're going to need to wrap up.
Okay. There is no reason that any ordinance applying to dogs should not apply in exactly the same way to cats. There are no benefits to allowing cats, domesticated cats, outdoors unsupervised. There are only costs to both wildlife and humans. If we truly love our cats, we will keep them under our control. And if we truly love nature, we will keep our cats under control. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address this ordinance before council?
I'm Edna Sutherland, 807 Melinda Drive, Oxford, Ohio. And I just want to say that I'm glad that the city is considering this ordinance. I hope that you will pass an ordinance to control dogs on leashes, so that dogs are on leashes. I am concerned that no length of leash is mentioned, and I would question that. And I think the instigation for this, this ordinance is, of course, that many citizens do not enjoy being approached or attacked or otherwise encountering dogs. And dogs have been known to attack other dogs, as we also discussed. So you know all the arguments, and I hope you will pass this ordinance. And I hope you will consider the length of the leash as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council on this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I would turn it over to council. So we have, first order of business would be to substitute.
I would move the substitution of exhibit A with exhibit B, including the language development stuff.
It's revised exhibit A.
Amended exhibit A, okay.
Okay. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So we are now discussing the revised exhibit A, and the first speaker was asking about cats to be included in the list on section A. And so I would just bring that up for council if you wish to discuss it.
So I wanted to talk about both speakers. I agree with the spirit of both of their arguments. However, I find that if we include this particular ordinance, it would be almost unenforceable because of the nature of when somebody spots the infraction versus when they would actually get cited for it. Like, it would be almost impossible to do that. So having that on the books would just be in spirit only.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Could we get staff to address that? Like, I think it's obvious that it's unenforceable in terms of having someone accountable to a cat that doesn't have a tag. But would this change any other rules in terms of, would cats be brought in like loose dogs under animal welfare control?
Well, as, as I reread the ordinance, it basically says animals. And so, yeah, you can't let a cat run at large. But as has been said, that's really going to be very, very tough to enforce. I mean, I know cat owners that their cats stay inside, and I have no others who's cat don't stay inside. They live around the neighborhood. So, but, you know, we're not proposing that we basically go around and enforce the law that says they can't run at large. That'd just be really difficult for us. And then, like you mentioned, unless they're licensed, we may not know who the cat belongs to.
So I agree with that. I guess the question is, would it change our general policing of those cats? Would they be brought in and put?
I'm wondering if Lieutenant Robinson, do you have anything to share on this matter?
So I'm not sure exactly how much I can share, or that I'm an expert on cats and cats running at large. But for a minor misdemeanor infraction, which this is, we do have to witness that infraction in order to, to file charges. And if we don't have an owner of a cat, or we can't identify who the person is responsible, it's going to be very difficult for us to do that. Very similar to if we see a piece of litter laying in the roadway. Very similar to if we see a piece of litter laying in the roadway, uh, I can't identify who the litter belongs to, who created that problem. I can't issue a citation, even if somebody witnessed that occurring. I, I have to witness that as an officer. As far as our animal control goes, I know that they do wrestle with this, uh, regularly. And that they have, they have worked with a number of organizations, both in the city and with the county, on the, the spay and neuter process, uh, with cats. Again, I'm not an expert in that field, but I do know they put a lot of effort and time into that, uh, and they have done a lot of outreach in working with the community, cat feeders, for lack of better terms, that we do have in, in our community. So I do know they're active in that. Uh, as far as how this section changes, you know, the D section, any animal running at large, that's just another section to the, uh, five oh five oh one. Uh, all that we're proposing tonight is a change to the C section, which deals with, um, how we, uh, owner, keeper, or harbor of dogs act, and how they treat a dog in public. So we're not changing any other language, we're just changing the section that deals with dogs and how they're handled, um, when they're in public, and being off on a leash, or, and being under the control of, uh, of their owner. Thank you.
So as we understand it, it wouldn't necessarily change the animal control policy around cats?
My understanding is it would not. I, I don't foresee us changing anything along those lines.
You're not gonna form a cat squad to go out and, uh?
If, if I could respond, I, but, but the, the fact is, is that the ordinance would allow a response if there were a, a, an issue with a cat.
Because it says or animals.
Correct, and I also want to point out that one, one of the reasons why that or animal is in there is, uh, certainly as I've become older, there are, people have pets of natures that I never thought they would have. I mean, in theory, the, the ferret who escapes, uh, would be subject to the ordinance, and it, and it wouldn't make sense to go in, and every time there's some new popular animal that's, that's being kept as a pet to ch- pet to change it. So it allows for the flexibility of, of the police to respond when appropriate based upon a citizen complaint. And then, as it relates to the leash, there was discussion about leash length. Um, the reason why we removed the six-foot length was because the issue isn't the length of the leash. I could have a six-foot leash and still not have my dog under control. The issue is the control of the dog. And, um, and so, uh, keep the dog on a leash under reasonable control does require that form of control, and the conclusion that we reached at the staff level that that would make the, the public more safe, uh, in that circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Robinson, regarding the leashed, uh, statement, because this is a minor misdemeanor, you would also have to see that?
We would have to witness the infraction in order to file the charge, or we'd have to have some other evidence that allowed us to bring that as a witnessed crime into court.
I'm asking this question for the edification of our public. Basically, would that, would that mean that, uh, an individual would have to film said violation and then show it to you when you showed up on scene?
I, I'm not even sure that we could file charges based on that, uh, the way this, the Ohio code reads, and Mr. Canard, correct me if I'm incorrect here, but minor misdemeanor infractions, we do have to witness. It's just very much like a traffic violation, we have to witness those, or we have to have some amount of evidence to, to bring that charge before the court.
Okay.
I, I think that the use of video or other technology would be an interesting question. I think it would be possible to get a conviction over that, but I think that the, the broader question is, because now we're talking about a situation where a, a, a dog, focusing on dogs, has created a condition where someone has been in, in fear, or has been injured. If there's injured, you're, we're not relying on this, this ordinance.
Right.
That, that, there's another level that goes with that. And o- obviously, ordinances like this are, are meant to put people on notice that they have certain obligations and responsibilities to friends and neighbors to, to take certain steps. Uh, and it would seem to me that, uh, would, for the most part, the people adhere to those rules, but we do have some people who probably aren't as conscientious as one would like.
And an injury doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily just a bite. I mean, if someone's dog was running around and their leash got tangled up on someone's legs and they tripped because the dog wasn't under control, is that an injury that could be caused by a dog not being under control?
I suppose in theory, but I think that what typically drives it, and, uh, from the cases that I've seen over the years, but I would, I confess that mostly it's when I read about them in the newspapers, is that the, the person who has been injured wants to pursue something as well. So that leads to the investigation. These are situations that discretion becomes a significant part of how this, the whole situation is handled at the beginning.
David?
So, you know, I appreciate people bringing this to us. Sometimes there are kind of holes in our code that we don't necessarily think about, and so I, you know, I'm a believer in innovating our code. Um, and, and, but I also feel like, to the degree that we can know, like, how much does it reflect the kind of customary belief of what the community is? And I would guess the community kind of would have assumed probably that there was some kind of rule that maintained that you had to have your dog leashed. Um, and so I think this just kind of codifies what I would think, what most people would think was common sense, um, beyond the, the broad language. And so for that reason, I think it's a good idea. Um, at the same level, like, I, I think the cat question, we're in second reading now, and I think that's a whole can of worms that, I mean, I think it's, we don't need to change the code. Like, if there were an issue that's in the code, if we were in second reading, all of a sudden to say, we're basically, the city bans outdoor cats, like, that's a bigger conversation that I don't think we're having tonight. Um, I think the code exists so that if there was an issue, you know, there's, just like if a dog were out of control, or a cat were out of control, or a parrot flew and was squawking outside your window, the code exists. I think as somebody else has mentioned in previous settings, we hope that the code is not the first resort, you know? Um, Amber, I know you've talked about this, and, and just because the law prohibits something, there's a whole enforcement level that's how enforceable this is. I think this seems enforceable, it seems common sense. I, I don't think tonight's we're banning outdoor cats, because that would be a different conversation.
Well, and, you know, in A, dogs aren't specifically mentioned either, so.
Fat law.
They're an animal.
Turkeys, yeah.
We have a few, uh, multiple comments about cats, and then one question about dogs. So just for cat reproductive cycle, they're induced ovulators. So every single time they mate, they can ovulate, and then they can have up to three to four litters, one to eight cats per litter, and so that means about one hundred to four hundred cats in the first seven years of a cat, of a female cat in her, in her litter. So I, I would agree with, and, and to couple that, the best thing, the best case scenario would be trap-neuter release. I mean, no one, no veterinarian wants to euthanize a bunch of cats. That, that, we just don't want to do that. Um, but there are trap-neuter programs in town that my husband is involved with and other veterinarians are involved with, in which we try to capture these community cats, these feral cats, and then release them. But that being said, I do think that we should at least consider in the future, I mean, this is a problem, there are so many cats. It's, it's a really big problem. Um, and not only the cats that don't have a home, but the cats that are not neutered or spayed that are being allowed to roam. That is also a problem. So I would question for B, one, it's a little weird just to say female dog, um, to specifically point, pinpoint that, because male dogs can have so many more puppies. Um, but I would also question if we should mention the possibility of male, female, dog and cat, um, that is capable of reproducing. Um, because I don't think that the mere existence of community cats on its own, at least if we're trying to find a middle ground, is the problem, because we don't, we're not saying that they should all die, because it's not their fault that they're there necessarily, but the fact that they are being allowed to reproduce to no end for hundreds upon hundreds of cats, I think that that is, that is kind of the crux of the problem. And then in the future, we really should be looking at treating cats just like any other pets, you know? You should have a permit for your animal, so that you're at least keeping tabs on, if there was some type of policy in the future, exactly like the lieutenant said, that we can, we know who the owner is. So I, I mean, I think that's super important. I think that's the only way we're gonna fix the problem is spaying and neutering cats. Um, and then my other question is, as far as with dogs, when I think about traveling, and I'm on the Enjoy Oxford board, right, and you want to have this dog-friendly town, people like to travel with their dogs, but they can't necessarily go inside every store with their dog. Does that mean that if they had their dog tethered up somewhere outside the store, would that, would that mean that they were unable to do that?
Good question. I would think, in my personal opinion, that's not under reasonable control. You tied it up, you're not there. But, you know, I guess, you know, we can add more sections to this ordinance, but, uh, you know, personally, I think most dog owners, responsible dog owners, know that that's not good, uh, to tie your dog up and leave it. I've seen it a few times in the fourteen years I've been here, but not many times, so I don't know.
And I think that's in large part because we're not a super dog-friendly city. You know, there's many other towns where, I mean, just look at Columbus. There's so many more dogs that are out and about. Um, I would say as a dog owner, I will run in and get a bubble tea and leave my dog outside, so I'm not breaking health codes, so I've done that multiple times, and I think that if the dog is tied up and tethered, it's tied up to a pole that I would argue might even be stronger than my arm.
You know, as long as the dog's not causing a problem, I don't think anybody's gonna find.
I'm gonna invite, sorry, sorry, Lieutenant Robinson. I saw him moving like he was gonna say something.
Submit, like many, many of our laws that we have, um, they don't come into play for citation or enforcement purposes until there's a, an injury to somebody, or a, um, uh, whether that injury is actual physical or something happens to another party. Uh, you look at our traffic code, and a lot of those things happen in the traffic code. There's many, many, many things that are in there that, uh, officers use their discretion to go past on a daily basis. Um, they're, they're de minimis violations, and they're not going to go out and seek action on those de minimis violations. Now, whether a dog being tied up to a pole while somebody's inside getting their tea, uh, or they, uh, they, they've got the dog, who is trained to sit and, uh, stay in the bed of their pickup truck while they're throwing frisbee with their, their child at the park. Uh, until something actually occurs, there's probably not a big chance of, of law enforcement taking a, 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 an action against somebody, uh, for, for something that has not yet occurred, uh, on, on something like this. So I can't give you, I can't give you a definite on every situation out there, uh, but I can tell you that we do have discretion. And that when, when somebody is injured, we do have laws on the books right now that if somebody is injured because of a dog attack, we, we do have things that we can, we can use, tools in our tool belt that we can use, that will bring a person into court, uh, to deal with those. And, and those are already on the books, they're not in, in front of you tonight. So we do have those, um, under state code. So again, I can't, I can't give you every, uh, situation out there, um, but would, would an officer driving down the street stop for a dog that's tied up to a pole? I, I don't know. Um, I don't think so, but, uh, but I'm not that officer at that time, in that moment, uh, with whatever circumstances are going on at that time. So, um, yeah, that's, that's kind of how I wanted to leave that one. In your situation, would we? I, probably not. If somebody was injured, would we have some intervention at that point? Probably so. Uh, but it would not be based on this ordinance. Uh, it would probably fall under state statute at that point, so.
Okay, yes, Jason?
Uh, I'd like to say I would be in favor of adding it explicitly, but I don't think there's support here to offer that amendment, so I won't. But, uh, I agree with everything Mr. Sullivan said. I don't think, even though I love the work that people are doing to capture and neuter and return, um, they're doing great work, because the alternative is, they're not kept from breeding at all. But even within that, they live for ten plus years. Even the cat, this has been studied thoroughly, even the cats that you don't think hunt, when you put little cameras on them, they do. They just don't bring them back to you. Um, I have personally witnessed some of the animals I studied in cats' mouths running through yards. And I chased them down and took it out of their mouth. Um, yeah. Uh, it's a very real issue, it's a very broad issue. Um, I wish we could do more, uh, but I don't think that's an option here right under these conditions. But I hope the public would, would hear this and be aware of it, and do better to keep their cats controlled. And also, I forgot the most important thing that most people are receptive to. It's bad for the cats.
Yeah.
Uh, they're prone to getting it by some other cats, with dogs, getting it by cars, uh, disease untreated, malnutrition, all sorts of other things. So even if you care about the cats and only the cats, yes, that, that happens too. It's best to bring them in and to control them for themselves and the rest will outplay.
Can, so can I make a motion?
You may.
To amend section B for any male or female intact dog or cat?
Do dogs get in heat?
Uh, they're not, but the intact part, so not neutered, not neutered or spayed.
I'm just worried about the second half of the sentence making sense.
Oh, yeah, um, due to their intact reproductive organs.
So, so I'm just wondering, like, it seems like A is pretty categorical, like, you can let your animal roam on your property, but you can't let it roam off your property. And so, which seems like that would soon be under A, whether it's in heat or not. I mean, the code is pretty categorical. Uh, so I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I just don't sure it's, if, if your, if your dog, neutered, unneutered, cat, feet, you know, if your animal is off your property, potentially, you're in violation of this ordinance, as it's been on the books. For how long has this ordinance already been on the books?
Long time.
A long time.
It's, it's a way, though, to not necessarily explicitly say that outdoor cats are not allowed, but that, for the love of God, just neuter or spay them, if you're going to do it. I think it's a step.
I would like to propose a friendly amendment to your amendment by just replacing the word dog with animal. Because then that covers what you're covering as, as far as the spirit of what you're trying to, and, and.
Part A, it says animal.
Or it gives a couple examples, but it basically says animal should be either in your property, or, or in the bounds of your property, or else you are in violation of this ordinance. And then in B, it will basically say, if you have a female animal, you're also in violation of this ordinance.
But I, I, I mean, I don't think it's just females. The males can be reproducing.
So I hear.
Intact, yeah.
Can. I hear the friendly amendment being proposed to you is to replace female dog with animal, and replace dog in heat with animal in heat.
That's it.
Or intact animal.
Unless the animal.
Do we really even need B now? I mean, because we're saying you can't let your dog or your animal run at large, and they only put that in there because they were concerned about female dogs in heat, but we're saying you can't let your dog.
Right, do you even need B?
I don't even think we need B. Whether it's in heat or not.
If they're unneutered, it shouldn't be off your property. I'm sure you're concerned, but I think B is totally excessive anyway.
I, I, I agree that it would fall under A, but I think that it is highlighting the importance of not allowing your pets to be mating all over town.
I get that point.
I think it should be explicit, since people don't know that.
So what language are you proposing for B?
I, I like what Glenn said, but I just, I mean, you can't, like, what Bill was asking, males can't be in heat, because that's the extra cycle for females, but they can be intact, meaning they have their gonads or reproductive organs. So if there was an intact animal, at any time the animal is intact or not spayed or neutered.
That's what I was gonna say, any animal not spayed or neutered.
Okay, so I hear the, the motion being, no owner, keeper, or harbinger of any, um, animal. Do you want to say non-spade, or, or is that, what's the proper term?
The term.
Veterinarian.
The term we would use is intact.
I know, but nobody would understand that.
But you could put a comma that said, not neutered or spayed.
Okay, how about, no owner, keeper, or harbinger of any animal not neutered or spayed shall permit it to go beyond the premises of the owner, keeper, or harbinger at any time.
And I would do.
Unless the do- the animal is properly in leash.
In the case of a dog, the dog shall be properly leashed. Oh, I. It, it's a different category of animals that relates to what one typically sees in, in a municipal area.
It's also weird, because now we're making a distinction, which kind of implies that if your dog is not neutered, it can go off.
It's okay, I worried about that.
I just, I mean, I totally get this sentiment, but I just think, like, A is a pretty categorical statement, and B, all the crafting of the language is not necessarily gonna change customary practice out there. So I mean, I, I, we keep talking, and I don't oppose to it, but I feel like, yeah, I, I, whatever.
I actually agree with your, your, uh, observation of this, like, looking at B, it contradicts A, and actually contradicts the whole thing, because it basically says if you have a dog in heat, and you have it on a leash, you can walk it off.
That's an implied contradiction, but I agree the public could take it that way. That's an implied contradiction, but I agree the public could take it that way. It's actually redundant, but that's not how it might be perceived.
So, uh, Councilor Ragoo has made a motion. Is there a second to her motion? Okay, is there?
I think it's important, 'cause I want people to spay and neuter their animals. If it passes or not, I don't care, but that is super important.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Um, now, we're having discussion on the amendment to replace female dog with animal not neutered or spayed. And replacing dog with animal.
So, I would argue that is better than, so I think the options are get rid of B entirely, or use language we just used. I'm okay with either, but this is preferable over specifically a female dog.
I'm mostly just worried about the accidental loophole that it creates. I do agree that it's really important, but I wonder if we can think of other ways to go about putting this in, putting it in somewhere else, doing more public education campaigns. Like, I get, I, I fully understand the spirit of what you're saying, but I am worried that when we go to enforce it, with it already being hard to enforce, that they're gonna say, "Ah, but look at that loophole you created." So, that's my primary concern.
My, my primary concern is that someone will say, "Uh, yes, my dog was off-leash, but my dog was fixed, so it's okay." And I don't think that that's the spirit of what we're trying to do. So, I might prefer the option of getting rid of B altogether.
Yet another option would be to change the wording to say, "And please have your pets neutered." That way, there's no, no conflict there.
Well, I think that, I think that the only thing I would say is that there should be a follow-up, because then we need to try to address, what are we doing about the cat population? You know, so, my hope is that we're right here. Can we not just at least do something? We're not gonna explicitly say "cat," right? I mean, I get that, there's not the political will for that. But, if we're not gonna say that, can we at least do something? So, I think that, or at least having a follow-up later about licensing of cats.
How about this? Substituting, pet owners should consider spay, to spay or neuter their pet.
Also, Assistant City Manager just agreed, had some thoughts if we could invite her up.
If I may just offer the follow-up. I mean, if you pass the, the ordinance change, we can do it, some social campaign about the dog leash rule. And then, part two, to your point, we can also do, from an environmental perspective, an education campaign on cats, um, and maybe on spaying and neutering. So, we can do, uh, you know, with your, if you want that, we can put together a small campaign to put out to the public about, "Did you know?" So, just wanted to offer that.
I think that would be good.
Thank you.
Do you wanna substitute this?
Um, sure.
Okay. So, the maker, and maybe the seconder, is asking to substitute for the current, uh, amendment on the floor to say in B, "Pet owners should consider spaying or neutering their pet."
Is that the only statement, or along with the amendment?
That's B.
We would have to make another change, then, because, uh-
Thanks, Chris.
I know, but, but, because then you're-
Hey, you're doing your job.
Then you're criminalizing the conduct, because it, it, the failure to do that then becomes a minor misdemeanor.
And in this, in public education in an ordinance, it's, I mean, there's public education in the door. One just procedural thing I would say, one of the things, I'm super glad we as councilors are sensitive to citizens who come directly to council and say, "Hey, we want an ordinance change," but then you end up legislating up here without the benefit of board and commission input on all. And so, you, you crack open, you know, this line, D, and then you wanna change B. And, and so, to me, I, I, I'm all for that, and I'm all for what you're saying, but I like, what a comprehensive approach to that would be. I'm not sure we're gonna work out in revision to this code tonight.
Okay, so, if, uh, given the comment of that Chris has made, do you still wanna have a vote?
No, it's fine.
Okay. Um, would anyone like to move to strike B?
Motion to strike B.
Thank you, Glenn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to strike B. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Are we ready to vote?
Could I apologize to Heather and staff for anything that just happened?
Sometimes you have to go through all that.
Yeah, well, it won't renumber these two, so it won't look, you know, we won't have A and then a C.
Okay.
We'll re, renumber and identify.
So, we're clear here. If Section 505.01B is stricken, that will also require striking 505.10E2, which is what, uh, that would, because we remove that, because that refers to subsection B. Just a technical cleaning up.
Yeah.
That doesn't cause any problems, we just remove it.
Yeah, just remove it. It would have to be deleted with that.
Yeah, you gotta buy it.
Motion to strike 501 E2.
B.
E.
E2.
Oh, subsection B, okay. So, all right. Everybody clear? And we're renumbering, obviously, from the deletion. That's included.
Did you need a second for that motion?
Motion to strike 505.01E, subsection two.
Second.
Okay. So, we have amended the amendment. Um, all in favor of amending the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
It now includes both. Okay, the deletion above and below. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. And now, are we ready?
Well, wait a minute, did we vote on the revise?
Yes, yes, we're ready. We're ready for the vote to approve or disapprove of the ordinance.
I have to vote, yeah. We have to have a vote on the actual main thing, which would require a calling of the roll. Heather.
Mr. Bretherton.
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo. Yes. Mr. Bracken.
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Ms. French.
Yes.
Ms. Snadley.
Yes.
Well, and I hope we do some public education, 'cause if anybody just followed our conversation, I'm not sure they'll know exactly what the outcome is.
And we'll move to number two, if you would like to read that for us.
An ordinance amending Chapter 935 Trees, Shrubs, and Other Plants by adding Section, Section 935-191 Managed Natural Lawn Area.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Is there a second? Thank you, Jason. All right, uh, who would like to talk about it? I guess, Jason, it might fall to you.
Nothing new since last time. We offered some amendments, but I don't think there was, um, too much drive to add them, though I'd still be open to them.
Okay.
Did you have something to add, Sam?
Well, let, let me add something, too.
All right.
Sam gets up.
Doug?
We just wanna point out, though, that our city ordinances currently allows vegetation, flowers, shrubs, trees, and other plants over ten inches in length, but not turf grass, or not just weeds. Uh, so, we just wanna make that known, that it's presently allowed. And I believe when Carla was here at the last meeting, uh, we looked back at the file, and she was asked to cut her turf grass and not any of the garden areas, so I just wanna clarify that. Uh, that's one of the reasons why on this ordinance, I left it blank, where it said, "Recommended," you know, we just, uh, you know, I understand that, uh, you know, we want to encourage that, and I think we do, and I think we will, uh, but, uh, anyway, enough said on that.
Yeah, just making it explicit, something that is already technically allowed. All right?
Sam, do you have anything you wanna add?
More staff comments, and then I'll come to the public. You will get an opportunity.
Yeah, we were about done with an informational campaign. I don't think this ordinance is necessary, but it's something that, I know a lot of people put a lot of effort into this, but if it's something that, uh, y'all wanna do, then we will do our best to interpret and enforce it. I think it is gonna add some staff time and some confusion, um, but we will do our best. And, uh, I think a, a resolution supporting and informing the public about, uh, what native plantings can do for the environment and ecological services they provide would be really good, uh, but that's what I have to offer.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, would anyone from the public like to address this ordinance before council? I'm gonna have Carla. Oh, okay, you can go first.
John Rolofsky, 3 P Body Drive. Um, I'm playing, I'm putting in a native garden this, this fall. It'd be nice to have the, have this on the books to help support. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Carla?
Hi, uh, Carla Blackmire, live at 400 Bus Fine Street. Thank you for the clarification on that. Um, and I, I see the point that Sam is making, um, that this may not necessarily need to be an ordinance, but might be better as a resolution. So.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Hello. Uh, my name is Antonio Alejandra. I'm in, uh, 231 Western College Drive. Uh, and I also wanted to, um, say that I, I, I completely understand that point as well, and I also agree that, uh, this would be better as a resolution. Uh, and I hope, uh, y'all consider this. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Antonio. Steve, welcome back.
Steve Sullivan, 104 Marty Court. Um, in, in the event that something like this does cause additional staff time and labor, and that it is explicitly allowed, I think some of the conversation that we've had around this, um, both here, as well as in the general public, and the stimulus that this has created in our community, has, has had a lot of benefit already. If, if it is more efficient from a legislative ordinance-type, uh, standpoint, um, and it's already explicitly allowed, I think, uh, the, the proposal that it be a proclamation is a resolution, thank you. That it be a resolution is, is good. And, um, I think we can see that, that city council and, and the ordinances that are already established would support a lot of the community effort that's already, um, been stimulated as a result of these discussions. So, if we, if we make it somewhat formal, uh, in that the citizenry know, hey, not only can you do this, but arguably, you should do this, and in fact, we wanna have code enforcement people encourage folks to do this kinda thing, and, um, then I would support that as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you all, and, uh, council?
What's the best way to move forward now?
Well-
I don't think we've-
I'm kissed before.
I think that he, here's the thing. If, if you agree with the commentary, then I think the way to go would be to vote no on the ordinance, and then request a resolution. If you disagree and would like to see it codified more specifically than it already is, then you should vote yes on this.
So, I might have a question for staff, um, and that is, would the additional compliance and work you have to put into this last for more than a year, in which a resolution would still apply all that, but then it wouldn't apply? 'Cause then it wouldn't really make a difference. It'd better to codify it, because it's the same effort either way that resolves itself over time.
Yeah, I think it would take multiple years to, to get into a system where there's enough education and understanding, and to, to make the new ordinance that's currently on, on the packet work out, where a resolution would live on beyond that. Um, I think there's a lot of ecological services that native plantings can provide. I think just helping the, the folks that are maybe absentee property owners and ones that aren't, and understand the differences, and how it's being managed in a way that's done in a neat way, I think would be, would be really good. And I think we have a good, um, marketing team, and, uh, you know, graphic design and, and campaign team that can really do a nice job of that.
So, yeah, I, 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 I'm, uh, I wanna achieve the end, a couple different layers, I would say, is that one, that, you know, I appreciate the sentiments, but we have a board recommendation in front of us. Basically, it's an environmental commission recommendation, so I need to wrestle with that, was recommended out of that board. I get the, I, I, I see the hesitancy back and forth, but, um, what I like about this ordinance is that it's explicit about what you can and cannot do. It's, no, 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 it's not, you know, if you wanna do this, here's a very explicit set of steps. And this could be done with resolution ordinances, but those of us who are up here on this days know that resolutions are pretty ephemeral. You know, we make them for all kinds of proclamations, and people don't often refer back to them. They don't, you know, so it would be hard to locate it. If any of us move on, the res, no one will ever remember the resolution we made. The ordinance lives on. I mean, it's got downsides to that, which is that it starts to clog up our ordinance books. I feel like this makes it, there, there's a lot of thought that went into this. I do have, uh, amendments to this, um, but I honestly, I, I mean, if you, when the call comes in to, to staff to say, you know, my neighbor is doing something crazy with their yard, like, either way, you're gonna have to sort out what's going on there. And you'll be able to know whether, oh, this is really long turf. This is, this can't be done. But if it's some other mix of things, then I'm not sure, e, either way, you're gonna have to question, what's going on in this garden here? And at least this ordinance provides some specificity, where you could all agree, like, what's the plan? So, I, you know, I, I feel like if it's six and a half hundred dozen of the other, this is a well-crafted ordinance that I think could, it's, it's not gonna make enforcement harder, it'll just make it more explicit what you can and cannot do. So, I'm, I'm still in support of the ordinance, if only because we've gotten it this far, and resolutions are nice, but I've made many resolutions that don't seem to have much in common life, so.
Thank you. Sam, did you wanna say something?
I just was gonna add, if, if you could give us a couple more meetings, and if you wanted to table this, and then we could come back with kind of an idea. Now, a picture's worth a thousand words. We could say what is and what isn't allowed. And maybe that would be something, if a resolution in support of this could potentially perhaps, uh, replace the ordinance. I'm not saying it would maybe unanimously, but give us a couple meetings, maybe if you wanted to table it, totally up to you.
I would entertain a motion to table, which is not debatable. If anyone would like to make that motion.
Yeah, I'd offer it up. I don't think that causes any harm to the intentions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of tabling the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those? Okay, the, the ordinance is put upon the table, and we'll, uh, give staff some time to, to kinda look at this. You've heard the discussion, and I think you can come back to us with something. Okay, that moves us to announcements and communication, and I'll start with City Manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. Uh, just a couple, three things. First, just a reminder that we have our budget work session with council, uh, this Thursday, October 20th, at 7:00 PM here at the courthouse. And then also, I did put in my report to council some information about our electric aggregation program, an update. From time to time, I look at the PUCO apples-to-apples comparison for Duke Energy customers, uh, which provides offers from other suppliers. And as of, this was September 30th, there were ninety-one different offers from various companies. And if you apply the different filters so that you have a program which is comparable to ours, which includes no termination or monthly fee, a fixed rate, and renewable energy, it boils down to only eight companies offering electric energy in the Duke service area. The rates at that time for those eight companies range from nine point nine cents per kilowatt hour to ten point seven five cents per kilowatt hour. And so, our program at five point seven one cents per kilowatt hour is, is very, very competitive. And you can also use the Duke's residential price to compare, to compare to what you might be getting from Duke if you were to use them as your generation supplier. And, uh, on September 1st, that, uh, price to compare was six point three eight cents per kilowatt hour. So, we have a very good program utilizing renewable energy here. And then I also just wanted to share with the council that, uh, we've had some discussions with the Oxford Cemetery Association. Uh, we met back in 2010 to discuss their financial situation. Uh, thought we might be taking the cemetery over. Back then, they were able to continue it for twelve more years, uh, through some donations, and also the city had to purchase some land, uh, from them, and they were able to continue their operation. But, we've been meeting recently, uh, with the president of the Oxford Cemetery Association and the cemetery manager, because she's gonna be retiring at the end of November. And so, had discussions with Chris regarding whether or not we're obligated to accept the cemetery if the association dissolves and abandons the cemetery, uh, which you'll note in my, uh, report to council that they did vote at their last meeting to have the city take over the cemetery. So, basically, uh, we believe that, uh, uh, we will be obligated to take it over, and we're thinking that we'll work out a management agreement before November 30th, uh, to provide the details for the temporary transfer of responsibilities until the actual transfer, the tangible assets and records can take place, and other due diligence that we need to, to do. So, I would expect that probably at our second meeting in November, November 15th, we would bring in a resolution. we would bring in a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a management agreement with the Cemetery Association. And of course, that agreement would end when the assets are transferred, and we then own the Oxford Cemetery.
Thank you, Doug. When you mentioned the work session, did you say the time?
Seven PM.
I believe it's six-thirty.
It's six.
Well, we have published already.
Oh, we've already published six-thirty?
Yes, we have.
So you don't read my report? Six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
The only reason that we've done it at seven is because there were times when the courts here on Thursdays, and they were not finished, so there may be that risk. We'll see. So, but if we publish it, let's stick, stick to, stay with six-thirty.
I think we should. All right, thank you. Mike? Robinson?
So just a couple quick announcements. I apologize if I'm being repetitive, but I did not have internet the past few weeks to be able to see if Chief Jones mentioned this, but you'll see our officers this month wearing pink badges. We've done this the past few years in support of breast cancer awareness. Again, officers purchase these badges on their own, and then we pay a nominal fee for the entire month to wear those badges. What we've done as a group is we've elected to take the money that we collect from the purchase of the badges, and then for the, the right to wear the badge, we take that money and we donate to a local organization that supports women's health. So I know we get a lot of comments about different organizations and different groups, why do we just stand out on this one? We support a women's group locally that, that isn't just for breast cancer awareness, but they, they help out with many, many different causes here in the community. So this is a chance for us to do that, and, and really, while it's one colored badge, we, we try to support women's health during one month, and you'll probably get another announcement next month about what we do in support of men's health. So you'll see the officers wearing those throughout the month. And then lastly, well, there's two things to this, but Family Weekend this weekend, just ask for your patience and understanding. We will have a lot of visitors in town, traffic especially in the uptown area, and I'm sure the restaurants will have long lines. So just bear with everybody that's in town that may not know our customs, may not know the rules. We'll get through, you'll make it. If you can't get down one street, go up a block, go down a block, town's a great big square, you can, you can find your way through. But with that, we are hosting cop, Coffee with a Cop this Saturday morning, nine to twelve. It'll be in the Uptown Park, next to the Farmer's Market. It's a great time, we have coffee, we have pastries. I won't say the donut word, but I'm sure there will be some of those. But join us for coffee, discussion with some of the police officers here in town. I think MUPD will be there, and we've even invited those guys from Elm Street at the firehouse to come up and join us. So I'm sure they'll bring some treats as well. But they will be there, so invite everybody to join us Saturday morning.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Joe. Okay, chief? Okay. Goes to you, Sam.
We've had a few questions on political campaign signs, so just a general reminder, keep them on private property, none of the public right of way. Twelve square feet is the dimensional limit. We've had some people ask about that. And then I also have to remind everyone, one month from tomorrow is the open house, public input meeting number two for the general public for the comprehensive plan Oxford tomorrow at the middle school, November sixteenth, Wednesday night, six PM.
Thank you very much. Hi, Jessica.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to follow up a little bit about the cold shelter and the public comment from the last meeting. So I spent the last two weeks really trying to kind of figure out what we can do. And so I want to let the public know that we've heard them, we've also heard council that, like, hey, please do something. And I do feel confident that we can find funding for either staffing or the shelter, but probably not both. And so I've been calling nonprofits and some different faith organizations to say, let's work together. I'm trying to convene a meeting because I feel like we can do this. It's gonna take just a little bit more time to kind of get this puzzle put together, but I think we can do it. And so I just want everyone to know that we're actively working on it. We've heard you, and we'll try to have something to you very soon. And then also for the long-term solutions for housing, I want you to know that we're just as actively working on trying to increase the, just the number of available units that are affordable in our community. And so we are actively, we're gonna be interviewing our two finalists for our nonprofit partner that we put an RFQ out in the next couple of weeks. And then also on November first, we will be having a work session again on American Rescue Plan dollars for housing, but we have a little bit more concrete ideas to share with you, and we want kind of your thumbs up before we would proceed down that path and to get your feedback. If you don't want to really dive deep and work on something, if council doesn't want us to take that direction. So those are just some housing updates, just kind of let you know what's going on behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Hi, Heather.
Hi. Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Glenn?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Alex?
Just one thing, it feels really early to mention Halloween, but we don't meet again until November first, so happy very early Halloween, everybody. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the Oxford Parks and Recreation Trick-or-Treat Uptown on the twenty-seventh, which is Thursday night. So hopefully I will see you and anybody who wants to wear an adorable costume uptown then. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for looking into that and reaching out. I know the conversations were happening, so really, really appreciate that. And I agree, I think that there's, there's gotta be some solution, and it's something that the, I've spoken with two completely different types of groups along the political spectrum, and everyone cares about this. When it comes to having a lot of people maybe loitering around or breaking into your car, I mean, even if someone doesn't necessarily care about the plight of that individual, they care about what it might be doing to our town and what it might be doing for crime. So I definitely think whatever we can do to try to help people when they're at their lowest and try to get them back into being part of the community and successful, that is just the benefit for everyone. And then I had mentioned about the Housing Lab that I'm involved in. It's a Good Nation Way program with Local Progress. Nicola Rodriguez from Family Resource Center will be joining me to Chicago, so I'll be really excited about that. We have a lot of legal opinions, kind of looking into the preemptions from Ohio, trying to evaluate what we can do about expanding the availability of Section Eight housing in our town, so preventing the discrimination from source of income. So that is kind of a big focus that we'll be looking at together when we go to Chicago.
Thank you very much. Amber?
A few things. One, I had a great time at Oxtoberfest. It was wonderful. There were some great vendors in town, and many people who said they wanted to come back. Food truck vendors who said, please invite us back next year, so I'm letting you all know. I want to thank staff and everyone from Enjoy Oxford, Parks and Rec, everyone who put that together. It was just a great community experience. Couple of other things. At the Interfaith Center this Friday from noon to one, there will be a discussion and sort of mini living room conversations with Dr. Kimberley Hamlin about Roe v. Wade. So there'll be an opportunity for people to talk and share their views on that. Also, now, their website has some conflicting information, but it's at six PM either tomorrow night or Thursday night, also at the Interfaith Center. There'll be a discussion on religion and politics, and it's going to be facilitated by the Interfaith Center, Wilkes Institute for Student Leadership, and then two other groups, one group called Red Hawk Count. And this is a group that provides opportunities to increase voter engagement, pushes for nonpartisan collaboration, and creates community projects that expand students' understanding of their rights. And they say, we strive to unite partners in the Oxford and Miami community in order to work towards promoting civics on Miami campus. And Meta, the Meta Collective stands for Multi-Faith Engagement for Transformative Action. And this is their statement, we are Miami students, faculty, staff, and other members of the Oxford local community. We differ from each other in religious beliefs, spiritual practices, or secular philosophies. We come together across those differences to promote inclusion, understanding, and justice for all. So they will be facilitating a discussion, and I think they'll clean up their website. It's either gonna be tomorrow or Thursday at six PM at the Interfaith Center. And Council French and I are continuing to work with the IFC and some of these groups to have more discussions in our community, so stay tuned.
Thank you very much. Jason?
Just wanted to thank staff for all their work, and especially on homelessness and housing. There are a lot of things I want to move really fast and really strongly on, and the reason I, I don't, like, I haven't brought more legislation, is because I trust that behind the scene, you guys are doing the great work, and I know you are. So thank you for that. Like, sincerely, thank you, and you do great work for the community, so please keep up.
Thank you. David?
Awesome. I know that, I talked about it before, and then it was finalized, but our Amtrak platform awarded by OKI to the tune of two million ninety-six thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars. That ranks up there among some of the bigger grants we've gotten, which I just think is, again, testament to the kind of nice dynamic we have going between big thinking, tight planning, and cost estimation, and great grant writing. And so we're able to turn a dollar into five dollars, so that's, we'll have to come up with that twenty percent, like, two million dollars. So congratulations. Miami's already committed to most of it. All right, okay. So that's really, really awesome. So congratulations and thank you, and I can't wait to be on that platform in a few years. Our, our conversations in the last couple of meetings have gotten me thinking a little bit just about the, the procedure and our relationship with boards and commissions and board commission recommendations, because we have, we have a broad suite of boards that meet regularly and put their heart and soul into making recommendations to council. And we don't always, like, agree on them, like, you know, but, but I think what's really important is figuring out how to make sure that the board and commissions are heard, or at least given their due. And, and thinking about somebody who's been on a board and commission, how that happens, I mean, so often I think people in boards and commissions think like, well, I just, I said it, I said it to staff, it shall be done. And they, obviously, it's not the case, but I think we want to tighten the loop. I'm thinking about, last week I brought some forward, or basically the codification of board recommendations. But they had been emails that just, I mean, you share the recommendation, but sometimes there's not acknowledgement or response or decision one way or the other. So I'm not sure whether it means sometimes we have to do more discussion items, or ask or resolve, you know, we need to be crafting resolutions more often, or, I guess I'm just thinking that we maybe ask, we ask for fewer recommendations, but they're more well-developed, but just trying to build, because I think that those of us who are boards and commissioners, like, I look at this native landscaping organs, even if we ultimately voted down or turned, you know, I, a lot of labor went under that board to, to arrive at a recommendation. And I'm not saying it necessarily deserves deference, but we have to at least give it a good airing. And so just hoping that, that we can find a way to do that, you know, in our legislation and our budget, so that those boards continue to feel empowered. Because as much as I feel like we should, I like the idea, we're doing some strategic planning from the top down, I think the boards and commissions are enormous source of energy and creativity, and how do we take that and, again, within the realms of what's feasible within the budget and the legislative calendar, but just tightening that connection, I think, would behoove us.
Thank you, Dave. Couple of things that I wanted to draw attention to. A lot of people in town have been asking questions about, as they do every year, they keep getting letters in the mail from clean energy companies that are asking them to switch, and they, they wonder, well, what do I have? And if you have not opted out, then you are in the aggregation program that the city manager talked about, and you're getting the lowest rate that you can get, and it's clean energy. So you can take those and just throw them away. So we can't control whether they send them or not, but you can control whether you get upset about them and worry about them and so on. They just, they come every year regardless of, of what you do. The second thing is that there are a lot of questions about Halloween every year about this time, and I was glad it was mentioned. And for everyone's edification, trick-or-treat in Oxford is always on Halloween. There's no question, and, and it'll be on Oxford Talk at least five more times, I'm sure, but we passed a, a resolution many years ago when I was on council previously that, because I made the motion, I know that we did this, and trick-or-treating is on Halloween. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What time does this start?
Do you remember that from the resolution?
I believe it's five-thirty until seven-thirty.
Typically, your memory's better than mine.
All right, now, the last thing I want to do is to thank everyone on our city staff and everybody else who had anything to do with Oxtoberfest. Especially Seth Kropenbaker deserves an enormous amount of credit for the tireless energy, productivity, and ingenuity that was involved. Bill Green worked tirelessly for one of the major props of Oxtoberfest, and Bill continues to provide for his community and does a wonderful job for us. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank Enjoy Oxford, everybody who had anything to do with it, all of our sponsors, including the hospital and Steinkillers and, and everybody else that was involved, and I don't want to leave anybody out, but to only suggest, if you had a hand in it, we appreciate it, because I bet, I heard fifty times, that was the best thing Oxford's ever done. And so I think it will be the first annual Oxtoberfest, and I hope so. I think everybody had a really good time, and it also demonstrated that students and townspeople and young and old can all be together and have a good time, and it was safe, and everything went well. So with that as my ending, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.